We are recording now.
Okay, I'm calling the closed session for the Marin Municipal Water District to order for the November 17th, 2020.
Okay.
And roll call. Director Bragman.
What are we doing?
Roll call.
Oh, I, I'm here.
Director Kohler.
Hi.
Director Russell.
Hi.
And President Gibson.
Hi. Okay, we have only one item, I believe.
Two.
Two, okay.
You need to ask for that public comment check.
Oh, yeah. Do we, do we have any public comment?
We do not have any public comments regarding the items.
Yeah.
So with that said, I'm going to go ahead and leave and Molly will take over.
All right.
We adjourn to closed session.
We're going to convene to closed session. We'll pause the recording and we'll lock the meeting.
Okay. Like we do.
Yep, we do. Assuming Larry Russell is behind the screen there.
Yeah.
I'm here.
Perfect.
Okay, I believe we are now on the YouTube. So let me try to make sure I don't hear the backend. Okay, that's good. We are good.
Okay, I'm calling to order the meeting of the Marin Municipal Water District for November 17th, 2020. I think we need a roll call.
Director Bragman.
I.
Director Kohler.
Hi.
Director Russell.
Hi.
And President Gibson.
Here. And I think Molly is going to give us a closed session report.
Yes, thank you, President Gibson. We did hold a closed session special meeting prior to the regular meeting. I'm going to do the report out now for everyone. We had two real estate negotiation items on the closed session and on each of those, we did as staff receive direction from the board regarding price and terms on those real estate negotiations. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a motion to adopt our agenda for tonight?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote.
Director Bragman.
I.
Director Kohler. Director Russell.
Hi.
President Gibson.
Hi. Now we're ready for any public comment for anything that is not on our agenda.
I do not see any on the attendees. Earlier today, I did forward to you a couple of emails regarding items that were not on the agenda and they will also be published on our website.
Okay. Good. Do we have, well, let's see, we're ready for general managers announcement. Up your mute, Ben.
You think I'd be good at this by now. I do not have any items tonight.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any comments from any of the directors present today?
No announcement from me.
Okay, Larry, Larry.
No.
Okay, can I get a motion for the consent calendar?
Move approval.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Director Bragman.
Hi.
Director Kohler. Director Russell.
Hi.
And President Gibson.
Hi. We're on our regular calendar, item number three.
Chuck is bringing that item tonight.
Who is?
Chuck.
Oh, Chuck.
Good evening, members of the board. Yeah, this item is relatively straightforward. We're asking you to approve a resolution to delay the rate increases from January 1st to April 1st. So you'll recall that we were scheduled to have 4% rate increases go into effect on July 1st. On May 5th, the board took action on a package of items that were meant to help out customers financially. One of those items was the delaying of that 4% increase in the rates to January 1st. We've spoken to the board on our, on our experience with delinquencies. We met with Finance Committee last week and spoke about this. And given that we, we have ongoing pressures from the pandemic, we're recommending the board adopt this resolution and push out the January 1st increase in the rates to April 1st.
Okay. Any.
Sensible to me.
Yeah, I agree. Any questions or comments from any board members?
Just clarification, if I might, President Gibson, that we will be reviewing the situation in April again before we make a decision.
Yes, I think similar to this time, we will have, I'll be in my routine check-ins with the board and we'll be continuing to evaluate the state of the county certainly and other considerations.
Yeah, and I also do want to thank Chuck for teasing out all the information that he did as far as the customers' payments and backlog. That is very helpful. So thank you for, for doing that.
Right, right. Okay, do we have any public comment on that?
Not on this item.
Okay, I guess we're ready for a roll call vote.
I'd move approval if it hasn't already been done.
It hasn't been done. Thank you.
Second.
Okay, now we're ready for a roll call vote.
Director Bragman.
I.
Director Kohler. Are you nodding your head?
I, maybe not loud enough, sorry.
No worries. And Director Russell.
Hi.
And President Gibson.
Hi. Let's see, we're on our grand jury report regarding the climate change.
Okay, that's my item. This past September 11th, the Marin County Grand Jury released its report entitled Climate Change: How Will Marin Adapt? They reviewed the current state of climate change activities in Marin County with the main conclusion of the report being that while progress is being made on mitigation initiatives, adaptation measures need additional attention. And there were a number of countywide recommendations to move forward with those measures. And as these grand jury reports typically do, they identified some number of findings and recommendations for MMWD to respond to. And in accordance with that, staff prepared a draft response letter to the grand jury, which is attached. I did want to call your attention, as you've probably seen, on one finding, number four, and a couple of responses I'll get to. We were not in full agreement with those and we indicated why. And on finding four, it was that the existing adaptation efforts across the county pay insufficient attention to potential effects of climate change, including on public health, ecosystems, and social equity. And we're limited in our responses. You either agree, disagree, or partially disagree. So the draft indicates a partial disagree, really indicating that more information is needed and that MMWD, given the nature of our business, we don't have independent expertise to analyze sufficiently to support that conclusion, particularly as it relates to public health and social equity. On recommendation one in four, somewhat similarly, given the nature of the district, we kind of didn't fully embrace those and felt that we weren't well-prepared to support the details of a countywide structure to move forward with these. We did try to indicate certainly the work we do along those lines in our general interest, of course, to continue to be engaged and support the activities, particularly those that relate to our business. Okay, if the board, if that works, of course, I'd take any thoughts or comments you have on that and we would proceed to final the letter and get it off.
Just a comment. My impression from reading the proposed response is that most of the disagreement or objection is the wrong word, but at least disagreement or inability to come to an agreement is based on lack of information, not, we're not ready to do that as opposed to, we don't want that. Am I reading that correct?
Yes, that is correct. And we weren't right exactly opposing it, just suggesting more information. And I assume the county will be weighing in on this. They were requested to and there'll be a process that unfolds, looking at a variety of alternatives that may or may not land on this precise one.
Yeah, and my own opinion is that the notion of, I'll call it a control center, you know, so some sort of agency or body or whatever that oversees this would be a very good thing, in my opinion. Sort of, if for no other reason than to bring it together, to get it under one roof. And I assume, while I think you had said we're not ready necessarily to, to do that or to participate in that, I would expect we would cooperate fully with such an effort. It seems so logical to me, you know, yeah.
Absolutely. And, you know, adaptation, and as discussed in the report, is, you know, as everyone, I believe, understands, is dealing with things of sea level rises and protecting homes and businesses. And that is largely in the purview of city, county, flood control districts and the like. So, but I fully expect, I'm confident that we would continue to participate as we do in other countywide similar activities and initiatives.
Okay. Last, at least for me, is that a number of people have contacted me on this and I have referred them to you. I presume you've been talking to those people and.
I did have a conversation, President Gibson, with a representative of, shoot, what.
Climate Action.
Yes, thank you. Marine Climate Action. And reflected, and I think their view was that the grand jury report may be way too heavy to adaptation and the work needs to continue on mitigation. And I did share all the work we are doing with mitigation, including, as you know, the project that's kicking off, looking at micro turbines for hydropower and the like. And that was very appreciated, our, our work we've done in fire, you know, protection and that sort of stuff. So it seemed, didn't seem to be a gap there with their interest in the work we're doing.
Good, good.
Say, Ben, I'm a little confused about the partial disagreement with finding four. It seems to me that's kind of a no-brainer, right? The existing adaptation efforts pay insufficient attention to the other potential effects of climate change. I mean, you don't have to be a public health expert. I mean, to say we disagree with it suggests that we actually have information, right? I mean, they're saying, you know, that, that, you know, that these things pay insuffi-, I mean, I'm, I'm just confused. I don't understand why we would disagree with this. We have no one suggesting the contrary.
It's a good question and we don't have to, if the board would like, take this direction. The reason I did it, and I tried to allude to in my earlier comments, that the responses are somewhat hampered prescriptively and you either fully agree, you disagree. The only other option is to partially disagree. And I, we just don't have technical basis and it wasn't in the report to support public health and social equity. I don't dispute Director Kohler that that there's some intuitive knowledge that we all have or otherwise that would support it. As an agency, we don't really have that. But I don't think it would be harmful if the board wanted to agree with that particular finding.
Right. I'd be a lot more comfortable with that because, and I think you and I are seeing this in the opposite kind of reverse. I mean, the, the issue here is whether we have sufficient information to say that we're, we're dealing with those other things. And I, we certainly don't have that. I mean, to say that we disagree with a finding that we have, you know, that we're, we're paying insufficient attention suggests that we are paying sufficient attention. And I don't know what would be the evidentiary basis for that. I mean, I understand you're saying you're partially disagreeing because you think there isn't enough information, but I think that swings the other way. If you have to suggest that we partially disagree, suggests that we think we do have enough information to make that determination. And I do not think we do. So, you know, I'm not sure where the rest of the board is, but I'd be much more comfortable agreeing with that statement.
Any thoughts from the other board members on that?
I don't have any objection to go. I understand her point and we're hamstrung by the way they've requested our response, but I think I could certainly live with that response.
Okay.
I can too.
Okay.
The, the one thing I wanted to bring up on this thing is, to me, the blind spot in the grand jury is it doesn't really talk about carbon drawdown, which I really think is the key to, to dealing with the issue. And that's something we are doing with, like, the work we're doing up on Bellinas Ridge, vegetation management, all that kind of stuff. So I, you know, they, there's a big gap in this grand jury report, which I think MMWD actually is trying to address. And I mean, I don't want to open up a whole can of worms because we have a very busy agenda tonight, but I did want to bring that to the board's attention and also really praise, you know, our efforts to, to address that because carbon sequestration, I believe, is, is the answer. You can mitigate carbon output as much as you want. We got to get the carbon back in the ground. So anyway, that's what I have to say. So.
Okay. All right.
So based on what I'm hearing, we'll modify the response to finding four that we agree. And if it works for the board, we would make that change and then submit this letter directly.
That sounds good.
Any public comment on this item?
I do not see any public comment.
Okay.
Oh, wait, oh, sorry. Yes, we do have one public comment from Belle Cole.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Am I muted or unmuted?
You're unmuted.
Good, thank you. Well, I'm glad I got myself in to hear this discussion and, and I think it sounds very impressive. And, and I think all the work that you are doing that was pointed out, maybe is not as well-known as it should be. And I think it's a good idea for MMWD to, to keep following this and make its positions clearer and its connection with the, both the adaptation and the mitigation. But I just wanted to say that since I'm the one who wrote this letter to you and expressed interest in seeing that the problem with the report on mitigation, the problem was not that it didn't say that it's taking place, it, it gave more credit to success than that there has been. I mean, yes, we've got the cur-, it's gone down and it's impressive what's happened, but it's just the beginning. And, and more or less what they have said is, is well, well, now we can move to adaptation because we've essentially solved the problem of mitigation. That's just not the case. So it seems important to be able to give a certain amount of extra strength to the importance of mitigation and the response. It's the way I feel about it. I mean, that's the way this, the group I'm with feels about it. And also, and also the importance of Drawdown Marin, which has initiated and supported and, and is moving into a new phase. And the phase is going to be to be a nonprofit and to be able to continue this effort with all of us. So those are things that I was advocating and just thought I'd repeat them tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We have no further comments.
Okay.
Really appreciate Belle appearing and making those comments. I think the work that she's doing and that Drawdown is doing is right on. And the more that the district can be working with them and supporting their work. And I'm very intrigued by her comment that people don't really know. I mean, the, the district has been working, you know, very proactively on, on climate change since I joined it and Larry joined it, you know, more than a decade ago. And we really need to be working with groups like Belle's to make sure that we're in partnership with, with them.
Yeah, yeah. I, I think this will gather momentum as it goes forward. And, and I think we're in a unique position to participate in that. And we should look for ways to participate where we can, you know. I guess you got your direction then, Ben? Or do we need a roll call vote on this or?
To entertain a motion, perhaps?
Yeah. We can do that. Okay. I'd move approval of the letter as amended, as suggested by Director Kohler.
Belle's second.
Okay. All right. I guess we're ready for a roll call vote.
Director Bragman.
I.
Director Kohler.
Hi.
Director Russell.
Hi.
President Gibson.
Hi. Okay, we're on number five here. Award of Contract 1935 for fuel reduction.
Good evening, directors. That's my item. We're going to invite Sean Horn into the meeting to give the presentation. We do have a short PowerPoint for you.
Oh, good, okay.
Good evening, board members. Sean Horn, Watershed Resource Manager. The item before you is Award of Contract Number 1935 for Fuel Reduction and Restoration Work. The recommended action tonight is to approve Resolution Number 8610, awarding a two-year fuel reduction and restoration contract to Hanford Applied Restoration. So on September 28th, the district released a notice inviting bidders to submit proposals for a two-year fuel reduction and restoration contract. The district received three bids on October 23rd and Hanford Applied Restoration was identified as the lowest qualified bidder. So staff is recommending that the board approve Resolution Number 8610, which will award Contract Number 1935 to Hanford, Hanford Applied Restoration in the amount of $1,300,099. This will be for a two-year fuel term and it'll have a option for the district to extend in one-year increments should the contractor meet the expectations of the district. And we'd be bringing that back to the board for each extension. So with that, I'm going to move into a PowerPoint that we put together for you to really allow you to understand where this contractor fits within the portfolio of our vegetation management contractors.
Perfect.
So again, this is going to go into the vegetation management areas that we're currently working on under our biodiversity, fires, and fuels integrated plan, and then touch on the specific management actions that this contractor and other contractors are assisting us with. And then I'm going to review all of the contracts that we have for vegetation management. So you can understand where this contractor fits within that portfolio, as I said. And then also the types of work that this contractor will be supporting on the watershed. So in this last year, we reported out the last watershed committee meeting that the district was able to implement 1,200 acres of fuel reduction and vegetation management on the watershed. You can see the brown areas are maintenance of our fuel break infrastructure and a lot of our work was really focused in the areas adjacent to the Wui. And then we scaled up some of our forestry restoration work, which is that dark green area around Port Truro Meadows, and then carried out some additional work in our wide area fuel breaks to enhance some of our grasslands and protect some of our oak woodland habitats. And that's that lighter green color on the map. So the vegetation management actions, typically when we talk about the biodiversity, fires, and fuels integrated plan, we separate these into six categories. But tonight I wanted to kind of break those categories apart and tell you about all the specific actions that these contractors assist us with. So we have fuel break maintenance. This is really going in and maintaining 1,000 acres of fuel breaks that we've already constructed on the watershed. We have construction of new fuel breaks. This is a really labor-intensive activity that's going into areas where we have not managed vegetation and trying to break up that horizontal and vertical continuity of fuels. And then we maintain a lot of broom on the watershed. We have 15 acres of broom. We maintain previous sites that we've treated before and we go into new sites as well and start to remove that. And that's a long-term vegetation management priority. We also address a number of other priority weeds. This happens through our early detection rapid response program as well as other efforts. We're starting to focus on targeted grazing within some of our fuel break infrastructure. We're scaling up our forestry restoration work as we, as we presented before. We're starting to address Douglas fir that's encroaching into some of our sensitive habitats such as grasslands, meadows, and also addressing it in some of our wide area fuel breaks. We're carrying out fuel reduction around all of our restoration sites and in our fuel break work. We're also working on defensible space around our infrastructure, some of our facilities such as water tanks, as well as our Rangers housing and our Sky Oaks Ranger Station. We conduct dam maintenance per the Department of Water Resources requirements. We also carry out grassland management and preservation activities. We're looking at scaling up prescribed burning and developing burn plans for the watershed. We're, we're also moving forward with roadside brushing. This is to allow for facility access as well as to support our recreational activities on the watershed. And then hazardous tree removal is another activity that we carry out on an annual basis. So I wanted to break down all of those contracts for you and just let you see where this new contract will fit into some of the other ones you've recently approved. So we have a landscape maintenance contractor that assists with some of our fuel break maintenance, broom pulling, defensible space actions, and then the maintenance of our dam faces. This contract's in the amount of $325,000 with Forester and Kroger. We have an arborist or tree contractor, which is West Coast Arborist that helps us with our hazardous tree removal, managing large downed trees that might fall in a storm event across our roads or our fire roads, helps us with technical pruning activities. And this contract's in the amount of $75,000. And then this new contract is going to be our fuel reduction and restoration contractor. This is really going to support our Douglas fir encroachment work, removing some of the larger trees where they're encroaching into these sensitive habitats, assisting with roadside brushing using heavy equipment, assisting with fuel break construction, assisting with some of our more technical invasive species management, supporting forestry groundwork. And then also a new activity is scaling some of our native plant restoration and maintenance activities. Some of these are priorities within the BIFIP and others are priorities within our Lagunitas Restoration sites that we have a obligation to maintain for the coming years. So you'll see this annual contract will give us $625,000. The total contract tonight is 1.3 million. We'll be stepping up slightly in year two with this particular contractor. And then we also recently approved contract for forestry restoration with professional tree care. This is really where we're bringing in that heavy equipment to help us with that forestry work and also some of our roadside brushing. And that contract on an annual basis is $650,000. Now, we have other contractors that assist us with more of our technical weed management work. We work with WRA as well as the Golden Gate National Parks Concern here, One Tam, on our early detection rapid response. Our contract with WRA is $75,000. And our benefit from working with One Tam is that they've really provided that lift in that early detection rapid response. And that doesn't have a cost to the district. That really just comes from that partnership, which is really great. And then we also use our watershed aids that support some of that invasive work as well. And then some of the forestry groundwork that gets completed on the watershed, as well as some of our pile burning support and trail maintenance is happening by the California Conservation Corps. We recently approved a contract for $190,000 to help with the next year of implementation of that type of work. We also have a contract with California Conservation North Bay crews. They help us with broom management, trails maintenance, and then we recently scaled that to be litter abatement as well. So they're working with us across the watershed and we have a contract currently for $24,000 and then also a grant with them for $225,000, which is supporting our Zalea Hill trail implementation. Now, we also work with Youth2Work and they support some of our forestry groundwork as well. That contract on an annual basis is $30,000. And then we're starting to focus some of our targeted grazing activities within fuel breaks to see how that goes. And we did this last year with a contract of a 20- And we did this last year with a contract of $20,000, which will move forward again this year. And then we have prescribed burning. So we've been working with the county to develop those burn plans. We've been paying $75,000 a year to get their support. Some of that support comes in helping with pile burning. Some of it comes with planning future prescribed burns on the watershed, as well as other fuel reduction work. Now, I want to go into what this contractor is actually going to be helping us with on the watershed. They'll be bringing some equipment onto the watershed to assist with roadside brushing, but they won't have the technical, the capabilities of a large excavator in the background there. Really, it's limited to a skid steer to help us with some of our brush work and then some of our ground support for some of our forestry work, such as Douglas fir thinning or systematic pruning of some of the hazardous trees within our forestry plots before we bring the equipment in there. They'll be working on some of the smaller diameter removal within these forestry restoration areas. So you can see this is a oak woodland that's actually been invaded by Douglas fir. And we've been going in and removing that as part of our forestry restoration work. So that's an activity this contract will be supporting. Also, some of our new fuel break constructions, a labor-intensive activity. We only implement a few acres a year because it is so costly and labor-intensive. But this is where we're going into areas that haven't been treated before and actually breaking up that horizontal and vertical continuity of those fuels. So you can see an example here. Also supporting some of our Douglas fir removal within our wide area fuel breaks. And that's really specific where we're managing these are in areas that we've been trying to build out our wide area fuel break infrastructure over the years. So this contractor will support some of that work as well. I'll have the tech, the equipment capabilities to assist us with some of our grassland work. So this is an example of where we've managed coyote brush that was encroaching into some of our grasslands, also within a wide area fuel break. An example of before and after shots of this type of work being done on the watershed. And it's the similar type of work that we'd be carrying out with this contractor. And then the new activity that they're really bringing to our portfolio is this native plant installation and maintenance. Now, this can range from installing plants to maintaining them as far as bringing water out to the sites to maintain them, as well as maintaining invasives around those native plants that we're installing. So we do have a requirement within our Lagunitas Restoration Winter Habitat sites. When we constructed those, we had to create access points and actually have some impact to the native vegetation. So now we're going in and restoring those impacted areas as part of the restoration and part of our permits for those projects. So this contractor is going to be the implementing entity for that work. And then also assisting us with some of our more technical invasive species management throughout the watershed, which can be very time-consuming and requires additional support from time to time. So with that, you know, we wanted to give you an overview of what our contractor portfolio looks like and the type of work that they're carrying out on the watershed. But tonight, we're recommending that the board approve Resolution Number 8610, awarding a two-year fuel reduction and restoration contract to Hanford Applied Restoration. So with that, I'll take any questions you might have.
Okay. Questions from the board?
Sean, are we going to be expanding our defensible space work around the adjoining neighborhoods, Kent Woodlands, Fairfax? Is there any plan to expand that work with these folks?
So with our defensible space, we typically think of that as like 100 foot from a structure. So we maintain 100-foot defensible space from all structures. If there's additional work that needs to be done, yes, we can continue to do that work. Some of that's more maintenance-related. Some of our fuel break infrastructure, we are trying to expand. And that's what abuts to that defensible space zone as well. And so that is in our BIFIP, we are targeting about 10 acres a year of expansion of that fuel break infrastructure.
I also.
Focus in those urban areas. Sorry.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think it would be a good idea to try to get the neighborhoods involved, doing some workdays with us as we do some defensible workspace, space work near the adjoining neighborhoods. So I'd be very pleased if we could do some pilots maybe next, next year. And the other thing I just wanted to bring up, and it was just an interesting point in TAC, and I think you may have been at that last meeting, when there was mention of when we remove vegetation overhanging the creek, we may be inadvertently increasing water temperature. So I, and I know you're aware of the whole issue, but you might want to just touch on that for the board, just as that's, it's just one of the inadvertent consequences of our fuel reduction efforts.
Yeah, and with our fuel reduction efforts on the watershed, we really aren't working around anadromous streams that have these fish species that we're really concerned with, as we are with Lagunitas Creek. And we are also, per our mitigation measures, avoiding those sensitive riparian areas as much as possible. I don't think we have very many cases where we're working in the riparian area for a fuel reduction work. But in Lagunitas Creek Restoration work, that's a very important thing to consider as we start designing new restoration possibilities, is thinking about how to minimize our impacts to the vegetation when we're coming in to improve habitat.
Thanks a lot, Sean.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, any other questions from the board? Do we have any public comments on this?
Yes, we do have one. Mimi Willard. Mimi, you're on mute.
Sorry, it took a while for the unmute to show up. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry for the delay. I just wanted to compliment and reinforce Director Bragman's comment. I know that he met recently with some members of my neighborhood at Kent Woodlands, which is very concerned about defensible space and wants to work cooperatively with the district towards that end. And it would be great if this could happen in any low cows where there is the, you know, interest in so doing. Thank you.
Do we have any other public comment?
We do not.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve this?
So moved.
A second? I guess it fails for lack of a second.
Second, second, sorry. Got to get unconnected here.
Okay, that's right. Roll call vote.
Director Bragman.
Hi.
Director Kohler. Director Kohler.
She's muted.
Lost in space.
Yeah.
She's muted.
I'll go on to Director Russell, and then I'll come back. Oh, there's Director Kohler. Director Kohler, do you?
I'm sorry. I think my sound cut out there for a minute.
The motion was to pass the Award of Contract, the resolution.
I'm so sorry. My sound did cut out. I.
Thank you. Director Russell.
Hi.
And President Gibson.
Hi.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right, six, number six, we have Phil, a senior engineer position. Must be Mike.
Yes, good evening, board members. Mike Bond, Director of Engineering. So a recent vacancy has been created in our department with the retirement of a principal engineer. And we'd like to underfill that at the senior engineer one manager level. So tonight, in this position, would be responsible for managing our construction group. They would supervise the inspectors and also work side by side with our engineering team and doing constructability review of design projects. And the position would report directly to me or would be directed to me. So with that, we're requesting board approval tonight to recruit and fill this position at the senior engineer one manager level.
Okay. This is all within our present budget, I presume?
Yes, this does not increase the total FTEs and the salary and benefits are in the engineering budget.
Okay, thank you.
Any expect any difficulties in recruiting? Under these conditions?
I hope not. I mean, I think we've, you know, got a lot to offer here. We've got a lot of interesting projects. The more experienced engineer positions tend to be more challenging, but you know, we will do our best out there.
Sure. Are you hiring headhunter?
No.
Okay. Any other questions from the board, comments? Okay, do we have any public comment on this?
We do not.
I guess I need a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
Okay, roll call vote.
Director Bragman. Director Kohler.
Hi.
Director Russell.
Hi.
And President Gibson.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're on item number seven, October Water Supply Report.
Yeah. Good evening, Paul Selye, Operations Director. I'll just share my screen quickly here. And let's get going. Maybe. Where is that? Over here. Well, my slideshow is not working. I guess we'll just, can you guys see it like this?
Yeah.
Yeah. For some reason, it won't come up on, on the full slides, which is odd. But anyway, I'll muddle through quickly. So the monthly water supply report for October. Tonight, we'll follow our usual steps and take a look at taste and odor. And then we'll, we'll look at the month of October, production and supply, and a storage snapshot with a projection looking forward and, and then a quick review of our water supply strategy. And so with that, our taste and odors, our taste and odor season is just about over at this point. And you can see October is barely registering down here with maybe one or two, I think. It says one, one complaint for algae taste and odor for the month of October. So no issues there. As I say, that season is just about over for this year. Our reservoir storage finished October with 95% of average and about 49,750 acre feet of water. So still slightly below average at the end of October. Our monthly water production, slightly up from the previous year, from, from financial year 20 to 21, and our imported water, as we've indicated all along, is up a little bit for October. And we're going to continue that strategy. Are looking at the monthly potable. So these are each month split up into five years. And October is continuing to show just that slight rebound that we've seen for the whole year, just about. And as we look at it in another chart here, slightly different way, running 12-month potable production. And we're towards the end over here of this chart. And again, it looked like it was starting to turn back down at one point, but I don't know if I can say that at this point. But we're watching this with great interest at this, at this stage. So I am expecting that to turn down a little more authoritatively than it has at the moment. Our next slide is total reservoir storage. And again, this is at the end of October. So pretty straightforward, you know, linear slope here as we draw down the reservoir through the summer period. And you can see from the average curve above, it does start to flatten out as we get into the rains. So that's sort of where we ended October, about 5% shy of average. Looking at our snapshot today, these two tables, so our water on this side, Lake Sonoma over here, and I've circled sort of the two pertinent, I think, numbers on each of these charts. So right now, we're at 48,257 acre feet, which is still, you know, 93% of average for this time of year. And again, Lake Sonoma, as of yesterday, had 168,805 acre feet. And yes, I am jealous of that number. But it's 91% of average. So we're in a very similar position. There's nothing unusual, per se, about our water supply position at this point. As, as before, our planned water purchases for the year going forward, we're trying to increase the amount of water that we're taking earlier in the year from Sonoma. And that's what this chart reflects. So up until October, so these are actuals. And you can see September and October, we struggled a bit to meet our targets, which would have been a little bit higher than, than, than here. And this just reflects some of the hydraulic constraints that we face in that aqueduct. But as of course, the weather and the rains, you know, have started and hopefully will continue. And so we expect that capacity in that aqueduct to become more available for us as time goes on. Our projection looking forward really hasn't changed much. Obviously, the only thing that's changed is our, we used to have a projection going through summer, which has now become reality, which is our black line here, which is our storage level, total storage levels. And you can see our predictions, which were 150% of average, average rainfall. And this is 50% of average rainfall. And so you can see, even though we would be at 50%, if we were at 50% of average rainfall, which is only 26 inches, we've still, next April, be above our, our trigger of 50,000 acre feet for voluntary rationing.
Right.
So in general, things are, things are okay with water supply. Our, our taste and odors are, we seem to be out of the woods on those. So I think no more complaints coming through till next spring when we start to worry about that again. Storage is of course near average. We're continuing our front-loaded purchases of water from, from the agency. And of course, continuing to watch demand. And again, the rain's really helping with that today. I think we had just over an inch of rain, and fingers crossed, folks are turning off their, their sprinklers. And so we'll continue that monitoring of demand and of course, storage. And as I noted, the, the weather outlook, rain today and sort of showers continuing tomorrow, and maybe a little bit into Thursday. And that's my report this evening.
Okay. Any board questions or comments?
You know what the rainfall was today, Paul?
We, yeah, it was just over an inch. I want to say 1.2 inches, something like that. That's up at Lagunitas. Down here, slightly less, but around an inch.
So then we're about an inch and a half to here today, something like that.
2.5, yeah.
2.5, okay.
Yeah, the last, the last.
Yeah, 50% of normal.
Not yet, less than, less than 50% of normal at this point. All right, of course.
Yeah. Although it appears if I read the chart right, we're at crunch time now. We better, better start getting some rain or.
I, I think that, you know, we're, we're entering crunch time. It's a, it's a month or two that I would consider crunch time. But, but this time, you know, middle of January, yeah.
Okay.
For sure.
Okay. All right, any other board comments or questions?
We are out of fire season at least, so.
Yeah.
That's a good thing.
Yeah, for sure. Okay, any public comment on this?
We do not.
Okay, I see this is approval item. So can I get a motion to approve it?
I'd move approval.
Okay.
It should be an information item.
Should be, but it's.
We've never approved these reports. They're just informational.
It says information, Jack. It says on it, information.
Approve.
I approve it anyway, though.
Okay.
I don't think we should start approving these reports.
So scratch that.
Well, then, then I would disapprove it because there wasn't enough rain.
Yeah.
Not over, not over.
All right, that takes us to item number eight on our agenda. All right, that takes us to item number eight on our agenda. Change of employers' contribution rate for health insurance.
Vicki Gray, our HR manager, will be presenting this item.
Okay.
Thank you, Ben. Good evening to the board and to all meeting participants. Through this staff report, staff recommends that the board approve resolution number eight, five, nine, one, and resolution number eight, five, nine, two, to set the district's health benefit contributions for the year twenty twenty-one. This item is presented to the board annually as it is a requirement to fix the contribution through board resolutions. All CalPERS participating agencies are required to submit these resolutions annually. And the district has met this requirement for the past twenty-five years. So again, through this recommendation, it is our recommendation that the board approves resolution number eight, five, nine, one, and eight, five, nine, two.
And if, if I may just add on a little bit, because there were some questions and comments that we've received in the district, and I wanted to try to address some of the questions that came up. The, the Public Employees Medical and Hospitalization Care Act does cover our board members as well as our employees and annuitants. And that is because CalPERS considers, for purposes of the act, that our, our directors are employees, non-CalPERS employees. So, and that's pursuant to Government Code Section two, two, seven, seven, two, which is a provision of the act, and it's also consistent with our verification in, in addressing the questions to our CalPERS representatives. So we wanted to make sure that we had clarity on that. So Section two, two, eight, nine, two does apply to the board directors as well. And we do have to submit the annual resolution to be in compliance with the provision. The district board is, based on my research, opted into the act in nineteen ninety-five for employees and new tenants and board members. There may have been other healthcare provisions prior to that time, but that's the year that I found that the district joined the Public Employees Medical and Hospitalization Care Act specifically. I also wanted to clarify that employees receiving benefits are entitled to continue receiving those benefits where they're provided, even when they reach the age of sixty-five. So they're still entitled to receive medical benefits, even though they may be of an age to be eligible for Medicare. So I hope that that provides some clarity, and Vicki and I will continue to be here and answer any questions as they might arise.
Okay. All right. Are there any board comments or questions on this? Hearing that, I got a few emails, so I'll presume there's some public questions or comments on this.
Yes, we do have a couple of comments. The first one is from Mimi Willard.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I would just like to weigh in briefly on the sort of overriding issue here, which is, I believe that the general sentiment among your constituents as elected directors whom you are supposed to serve is that that this is an inappropriate use of funds. Paying the full cost of the family health insurance up to eighteen seventy-one point six eight per month for directors is contrary to the prevailing practice in Marin, which is really what is your appropriate fogey. It's, it's generally not done here and certainly not generally done at this high level. Two hundred dollars a month, for example, is done in, in the Galinas Valley, which is a fraction of what you're providing. The ratepayers object, I think, on, on three grounds. First of all, and I think a particular concern is that this kind of action makes directors effectively employees, which is really at conflict with their fiduciary role to, to provide independent oversight. They, they, they earn, they benefit from what they are providing for the other employees. Secondly, as I mentioned before, it's an inappropriate use of ratepayer dollars. And thirdly, those over age sixty-five, certainly among the board of directors, most of whom have outside jobs. This, this is inappropriate for them to not be on Medicare. It's an excellent program. Most of your constituents would agree that it is. It's good enough for them, and it should be good enough for you. And I think in some, the fact that perhaps you are permitted to award yourself these benefits doesn't make it the right thing to do.
Thank you. The next speaker we have is Laura Epple.
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right. You have a letter of objection from Cost saying that this justification is completely inappropriate. And just a moment ago, when Ms. McLean cited yet another statute, Government Code Section twenty-two, seven, two, two, seven, seven, two. That doesn't help you either. I have no idea why you're doing this. You can get just as much compensation without this illegal justification. You're making payments to directors. Okay, so you're making payments to directors. This is taxable compensation. And you can do it, but making this ridiculous justification just makes no sense. And I don't know why you're doing it. It's not appropriate, and it's definitely contradicted by the very statutes that you have cited. Now, I can read. This doesn't take some kind of genius to read this, just somebody who understands the English language. So if you read these two statutes that you've cited, you will find that they do not apply in this situation. And I, I think you owe it to the ratepayers to withdraw this resolution and come up with something that makes more sense.
Thank you. I do not see any attendees that would like to make a comment, further comments, but if I, if I may, President Gibson, I'd like to talk to you or to you and to the board that we have received many, many emails regarding this particular item concerning the approved, the proposal for approving Resolution eighty-five, ninety-two. So due to the unique length of comments, thirty-five and counting, I'm going to try to summarize what was stated in those. So as we've heard from Ms. Willard and Ms. Epple, as well as hearing about from Cost, the Coalition of Sensible Taxpayers, we, a third of those emails we received were all in relation to Cost's letter to us or to the board opposing this resolution. One of the highlights of that of the emails or of the letter was that the fact that MMWD needed, needs to end the practice of paying health insurance to part-time directors. Many of the comments of the emails basically were stating the same thing, that they concurred that the director shouldn't receive these benefits because they are only considered part-time and not employees. One email stated that being a director is just doing public service, so why are, why are the directors getting paid for it? As was mentioned by one of the other commenters tonight, another email came in regarding that we should consider Los Galinas sanitary districts policy providing a two hundred dollar stipend for active board members for their health insurance. But other, the, those were the majority of the emails. And then lastly, the other emails that came in had to do with why are, why is the board doing this when we are, when we are getting ready to do water rates and when we've increased the water rates? All of these comments that came in will be posted on our website tomorrow. And hopefully I can get that all to you by tomorrow afternoon. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the board or questions from the board?
Could I comment, Jack?
Please.
Just, I think the language used by Cost in its letter, which accuses the district of fraud, really needs to be reconsidered here. It's just not founded legally or factually. I mean, this, as far as I could tell, and I've provided the documentation to Mimi, the practice of providing health benefits to the board, as far as I could tell, at least began twenty-five years ago and probably before then. It's been monitored and administered by CalPERS itself. So this isn't some kind of shell game that's, that's being foisted. This has been a public item and a public issue for many years and, you know, and I understand there's disagreement from Cost about it. But again, I think the language used is, is inappropriate and unfounded. Government Code Section twenty-two, seven, seventy-two defines an employee under subsection two, as an officer or official of a contracting agency. Well, MMWD is the contracting agency. We are the officials. We're considered non-CalPERS employees. And I just like to say on a broader, on the broader issue, having served for eleven years as a municipal official in Fairfax, which did not provide benefits, it has been really, the benefits have really enabled me to serve on this board. And I think there's something to be said for compensating elected officials. I think the other municipal officials in Marin County should get healthcare, as I think all people should get healthcare. Medicare is not going to work in my particular situation because I've got two young guys that need insurance in my family. So again, I, you know, I, I understand the issue. I understand the disagreement. I disagree with the language. I disagree with the legal interpretation of, of what's been going on here and just ignoring the fact that this has a long history in the district and it's a minute fraction of our budget and encourages public participation on our board, which I think is a good thing and I think should be expanded to other municipalities. So I, I am not in agreement with austerity to start cutting benefits. We're in the middle of a pandemic. Of course, that's also another issue here which plays into it. So it's a complex issue and, and I don't think it's, it's an issue that should be waved around like a, like a red flag. I think it, you know, it deserves discussion. Hopefully, we're giving it discussion. I'm fine continuing to discuss the matter as we go through approaching our next biannual budget. But I really appreciate it. It's enabled me to serve the district, which has been a huge honor and just a great thing. And I just want to sort of state for the record that I think we should defend it. I think public service is important and should be encouraged.
Well said. Well said.
President Gibson, one of the prior public speakers wants to make another comment. Should, should we just move on or should I let her speak again?
It violates, I'm going to say yes, as long as it's a short comment. You know, but our rule is you get one bite at the apple, but go ahead, you know.
Okay, I'll let her speak.
This is Laura Apple. Director Bragman just misquoted that statute that Ms. McLean referred to. And I could read it to you if you want, but he misquoted it. It says employee means an officer or employee of the state or of any agency, et cetera. And by misquoting that, he has suggested something that really wasn't meant by the statute. And that's all I'll say at this point.
Thank you. Okay, any other board comment or questions? Yeah, Larry.
Ms. Epple, I was quoting subsection two, which I'm going to hold up right here for you. And I've underlined it. There's a sub, I'll, I'll leave it there. Let me see, there we go. So if you look at subsection two, it has another additional definition, and that's what I was reading from.
Okay. All right, can I get a motion on this?
I'd move approval.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, I guess we're ready for roll call.
Director Bragman.
Hi.
Director Kohler. Hi, thank you. Director Russell.
Hi.
And President Gibson.
Hi.
Thank you.
All right, we have a number nine, awarding the contract for San Geronimo Treatment Plant Construction. Generator construction.
Thank you, Director Gibson. Alex and I is going to lead our discussion on this. Alex is our senior engineer and the project manager for this project. Hi, Alex.
Hi, good evening all. Alex and I are senior engineer in the design section. I'm here this evening to present the award of contract number nineteen oh five for the San Geronimo Treatment Plant Emergency Generator Project. The San Geronimo Treatment Plant Emergency Generator Project includes the installation of a three-megawatt emergency generator system at our San Geronimo Treatment Plant to provide emergency power and ensure continued production and distribution of our water supply. The San Geronimo Treatment Plant provides approximately fifty percent of the district's water supply for our customers. And by installing the three-megawatt generator at our treatment plant, the district will be able to ensure the continued production of water during Pacific Gas and Electric's public safety power shut-offs or during any other unforeseen power outage that occurs. The district advertised this project on September fifteenth, and we received four bids on October twenty-ninth. The original generator design was based off of the medium voltage caterpillar generator in a one-point-five megawatt system for a total of two generators for a total energy output of three megawatts. After further evaluation, the district deemed or determined that non-basis design generators manufactured by both Generac and Kohler may qualify as alternate systems with additional design and cost considerations. Given the complexity of this project, the district issued contract addendums in which it specified and required that bidders that submitted bids that varied from the basis of design shall include with their bid documents, complete information from the generator manufacturers demonstrating to the district that the proposed substitute generators would be equal in quality and utility to the original design and would result in a fully operable system. The engineers estimate for this project was four million, three hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. Thompson Builders Corporation had the apparent low bid of four million, six hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. Thompson Builders bid was based on a Kohler generator system, which varied from the basis of design. Thompson Builder did not, however, include the, with their bid documents, the information that was required to demonstrate compliance with the requirements of the contract specifications. District staff also determined that Thompson Builders did not include a specified experience required as identified in section 1,000 of the contract specifications. This section required successful experience on three permanent generator projects of similar or larger magnitude within the past 10 years, one of which must have been completed in the past five years. As a result, staff determined that Thompson Builders Corporation's bid was non-responsive for not meeting the requirements of the contract specifications. The second apparent low bid was submitted by CWS Construction Group with a bid amount of $4,662,600. CWS's bid was also based on the Generac system, which varied from the basis of design. CWS did not include information with their bid, which demonstrated compliance with the requirements of the contract specifications. The districts, district staff also determined that they did not include specified experience required as identified in section 1,000, again stating the experience on three permanent generators of similar or larger magnitude in the past 10 years, one of which must have been completed in the past five years. As a result, staff determined that CWS Construction Group's bid was non-responsive for not meeting the requirements of the contract specifications. The next apparent low bid was submitted by Haskell Corporation in the amount of $5,129,440. Haskell's bid was based on a Kohler generator system, which did vary from the basis of design. Haskell's bid did include complete information demonstrating compliance of the requirements of the contract specifications. In addition, Haskell also included projects which clearly demonstrated compliance with section 1,000, which required, again, successful experience on three permanent generator projects of similar or larger magnitude within the past 10 years, one of which must have been completed in the past five. This project does have a duration of 455 days and has been broken out into two phases. Phase one will have a duration of 225 days and will be completed by June 30th of 2021 and will provide the district with a function generator system. Phase two will have a duration of an additional 230 days and will be completed by February 15th, 2022, and will be to install an automatic transfer switch that will automatically switch the power from PG&E to our generator system whenever PG&E power goes down in treatment plant. The longer lead time on this item is what led to the two-phase approach, and that's what broke it out into two phases. By awarding this contract today, the district will stay on schedule and will have its own permit generator by June 30th of 2021 in time for the next PG&E PSPS season, avoiding the need to rent another generator for a third year. For these reasons stated, district staff recommends that the board approve resolution 8611, awarding contract number 1905 to Haskell Corporation at their contract bid price of $5,129,440. Any questions, comments?
Okay. Any board questions or comments? Larry?
Yeah. Was the Kohler generator that Haskell specified the same as the one specified by the low bidder?
It's not, we cannot make that determination because the information was lacking from the low bidder. They were, they never provided that information to us.
Not even a model number?
They, they gave us a model number, but there are different variations in that generator. They come in different sizes that we weren't able to evaluate.
And isn't the cost to rent the generator lower than the cost difference between the low bid and the Haskell?
I believe maybe Paul Selye may have some information on that. I don't have those rental numbers.
My recollection is about a quarter million a year, but I could be off on that. That's what I remember.
Two thirty, Larry.
Yeah, the staff report indicates about, right, $250,000 a year for rental.
So, you know, while I appreciate the, the situation, I mean, it, it seems to me we should give some thought to rebidding the job. You know, it's, the lowest bidder is 300,000 over the engineer's estimate, and we're talking about a difference of 500K. You know, the two, two, one and two are pretty close. Now, I understand they may not have the experience and that's an issue they're not going to be able to resolve between now and, and if we were to rebid. So those are my initial reactions to it.
Could I chime in?
Yep.
What, what's the life expectancy of the generator?
How much are you going to use it? That's, that's the question, huh? You know.
Right, correct.
It just seems, you know, this is, when this was initially presented, we were looking at about half the cost that we're looking at now. And I, I just don't know if it really pencils out because we could rent the gen, we could rent generators for the next 20 years and still be paying out costing less than installing our own. And I'm just wondering if, you know, the generator has a life expectancy of 20 years. I mean, I, I just don't know if it really pencils out. The other thing is, does the contractor have an opportunity to correct his bid? So was Thompson notified that their bid was deficient and given an opportunity to correct it as far as providing experience?
I don't know if Mike wants to speak to that or if I should.
With, with respect to experience, they did list their experience, Larry, and we talked about that in the, in the report. So they were deficient and they, they don't have the experience that we require.
Okay.
They did give us the information. In fact, they're, the generated units they've installed are substantially smaller than what we're contemplating here. And then also we did do a return on investment calculation and even at the full loaded price of the contract, which we don't, the full budget, the return on investment is 15 years relative to renting a generator every year. And by building our own generator, we get coverage six months, or excuse me, and year round. And when we rent the generator, we only get six months of protection. So we'll get a fit, the return on investment is 15 years, plus you get year-round protection with your own generator. And we've, you know, you could conceivably have an event in the winter time. We wouldn't have the rented generator then, and so we would be vulnerable. If you get an earthquake or any kind of other event that happens, you are still vulnerable. This really provides us with such a strong level of resilience that we've needed out there. And the program that Alex has put together gets us there starting, you know, this summer, which you know, every year we're kind of a little bit rolling the dice with rolling, you know, renting a generator. Here we have a chance to put in a permanent generator. The references for Haskell came back very positive. Modesto Irrigation District was very high on this team. You know, so they know exactly what they're doing. And so we, we feel really strongly about what we're proposing here tonight. We see that there is a difference in the bids, but the value that we think a team like Haskell brings with their experience and their understanding of how to do the project, I think will really pay off for us.
I wanted to just reinforce one point that Mike made. In my view, while the PSPS events were the initiation certainly for moving with this project, even absent those, if we weren't having PSPS shutdowns, this would be a very important project for us for general resiliency, for natural disasters, power outages. We have one line coming in. We're really highly vulnerable and best industry practice is to have a backup for such a critical facility. And Mike was sharing with me, we did have an event some years back where we lost power and the tanks were drawing down and fortunately PG&E was able to restore it. But you know, we are an earthquake country and wildfire possibilities. I, I do think in a way I look at it in a reverse way that the payback from the rental in a way subsidizes a very good resiliency project for us, you know, almost 50%. So I, I do think the district's really well positioned. And in terms of rebidding, I, I certainly appreciate Larry that looking at the numbers, of course, as you know, it's a bit of a roll of the dice when you rebid in terms of, are you going to get a bidder with the sort of experience this one has and how the bids play out. You really don't know. They don't always come in how they did this time or, or lower. The, the market changes, people get busy. And there's certainly a staff cost. It's not, you know, dominant, but going through the bid process. So I, I would recommend we stay the course, but a, a lot of good work has gone into this, but more so really just to position the district with this resilient backup for such a critical operational facility that is really right at the heart of our core business.
When, for me, my inclination is to support the staff on this. Part of resilience is redundancy. I've become convinced of that in the climate space, and I think it translates here. And one other quick comment, I just want to say for the record, since there's been a lot of conversation about this Kohler generator, not related to me, and just in case anybody in, you know, cyber space is wondering, you know, no conflict of interest there.
All right.
And if I may just address quickly, Director Bragman's question about whether there was a notice and an opportunity to respond to the low bidder. There, there was a notice and opportunity to respond to both of the bids that were found to be non-responsive.
Yeah.
And, and Mike, I, I think your points in response to mine are excellent. Okay. Because I didn't consider that we're only renting for part of the year.
Yeah, that was news to me too.
Yeah. So that's a good point. Okay. We could lose power out there from any number of incidents, including earthquake, obviously. The cost benefit analysis, you know, that would have been an interesting supplement for me to take a look at, but I'll, I'll go on your word. So, you know, that kind of has given me some confidence in, in moving forward. So.
And I think that's good comments, Larry. I, I think that the life of something like this is more like 50 years, five zero. Because, you know, it, it's, it's an engine. And if you use it zero hours a year, it lasts a whole long time, needs batteries and things, but the engine doesn't go down. You know, if you use it 1,000 hours a year, which I would say would be high usage on this, I mean, this size, they can go 10,000 hours, you know, or something like that. So there's a lot of life in it. I agree completely with what Ben said about the need for it. You know, when the decision was made not to put in the Blueberry Ridge tank, then the generator became far more consequential.
Yeah.
Because they can't, we, we can't get the water out of San Geronimo Valley over the ridge on Fairfax-Bellinas without the pumps.
Right.
And I don't know what they are. They're probably half of our energy consumption goes to running those pumps coming out of San Geronimo. They're like 600 horsepower. I mean, they're really big guys. And, but, but with all that said, I, I'm still a little concerned about the estimates 4.3 and the, the bid price 5.1. I, I'm frankly also concerned about it not being a Caterpillar. You know, this, at least to me, from my experience, that's a pretty good sized unit for Kohler or for Generac from my experience with them. You know, obviously they must make it. And I'm sure Haskell wouldn't have utilized it and CAT must have been very expensive. Alex, do you know what the engineer's estimate was based on? What engine?
For one engine, let me get that real quick. Each engine was $375,000 based on the Caterpillar estimates we got.
Based on Caterpillar and apparently CAT raised their prices or something, huh?
Yeah.
We did hear from the engineer, Larry, that he thought that there was probably a higher premium for the Caterpillar unit because of the, one reason we might not have gotten it because of the long lead time, they would have had to rent a unit, would not have been ready.
Well, that's interesting. That's an interesting comment. What, what about the air emissions issues? You know, we lost those generators or those motors, the pumps out at at Stulahouli or wherever they were, we had to abandon them. Remember the ones? Because they couldn't meet the current air standards. I mean, I, it's obvious. I think the air standards are not going to go up. They're not going to get more lenient. But I suppose these units, because they already have the filters, there's not a lot more that can be done to them. I mean, I'm sure CRB can do more, but in general, we should be okay with these engines?
Correct.
For, for a while, huh?
Yes. And we already have the permitting from the Bay Area Quality Management District in hand. So yeah, with the diesel particulate filters to, to reduce that matter. So we're definitely well in compliance with, with the regs. Yes.
Another thing I'm a little disappointed in, I would have expected Thompson to be here tonight on the meeting to make a position known about this. I don't see them. I, I don't know all the people on that are participating, but I'm a little surprised that they didn't show up. So just a comment. What was that?
He said, are they, are we sure they're not out there? We haven't gone to public.
Can we see the hands up?
Yeah.
I don't know. I just didn't see any names that looked like the names that were on the letters.
All right.
They're all staff.
Do, do you want a, a motion, Jack?
I think Cynthia gave us a motion. I think we need a second.
I'll do the second.
Okay. Roll call vote.
Director Bragman.
Aye.
Director Kohler. Director Russell.
Aye.
And President Gibson.
Aye. Okay, we're on number, item number 10, the district's emergency contracting provisions.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, you're very welcome. Thank you very much. So this is to execute contract number 1935 for the Portius Tunnel Emergency Pipeline Replacement Project located on a watershed. As reported back on the September 15th board meeting, the district had discovered that the 26-inch welded steel transmission pipeline inside Portius Tunnel had broken and was leaking. This pipeline is located approximately 45 feet below grade, below five corners in the tunnel, and the tunnel has constantly caved in, rendering the tunnel inaccessible to people. District staff have quickly mobilized, conducted a closed circuit television inspection of both the existing 26-inch welded steel pipe from 1926 and the abandoned 24-inch concrete pipe from 1919 within the tunnel itself. It's about 250 feet. After evaluating those CCTV inspection reports, the recommended approach is to slip line both of the pipes with a 22-inch and a 20-inch HDP pipe, which will be the most cost-effective way of replacing these pipes and still maintaining the existing hydraulic capacity of the 26-inch pipeline that's in there in the tunnel. On November 6th, district staff received four informal quotations to slip line both the pipes. Proposals range from a cost of $364,000 to just a little bit over a million dollars. The engineer's estimate for this project was $529,895. The lowest informal proposal was from WR Ford and Associates in the amount of $364,990. This project does have a duration of seven weeks with a contract completion of December 30th, 2020. District staff recommends the board approve resolution number 8608, invoking the district's emergency contracting provisions and directing the general manager to execute a contract number 1935 with WR Ford Associates in the amount of $364,990 for the Portius Tunnel Emergency Pipeline Replacement Project. Any, any questions or comments?
And do you want to remind the board that it does require a four-fifths vote of the members? So that would be all four members.
Okay.
Vote on this because of the.
Alex, are they doing pipe bursting or is it just, they're just slipping it in?
Correct, correct. They're just going to slip a slightly smaller pipe within the existing two pipes in there and then connect them on both ends to maintain. to maintain hydraulic capacity, so that it's not gonna be pipers.
And then, so the tunnel is not gonna be reconstructed or anything? It'll just be collapsed or remain as is?
Yeah, it, perhaps at some future time, there will be some additional mitigation measures. But just right now, to address a leak in the pipe, this is what we're gonna do to address that.
There was, it looks like there was a landslide out there on the one end towards, towards Phoenix, you know?
Correct. On the eastern side, there's a, a bit of a little slough that came off of the road. It's off to one side, it's not directly over the tunnel itself, but it did add some material right at the entrance. It's gonna have to be excavated and, and regraded at some point.
Yeah, it looks a little unstable, so.
Yeah.
That's good. You got a great bid. That's good.
Yes.
Okay, do I have a, any, any public comment on this?
We do not.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'd move approval.
Second?
Okay. Roll call vote?
Director Bragman?
Hi.
Director Kohler? Director Russell?
Hi.
And President Gibson?
Hi.
Item number 11, a personal services contract on a local hazard mitigation plan.
Yes, so Kristin Arnold, Associate Engineer in our planning group, we will, will lead this discussion, so. Hi, Kristin.
Hi. Good evening. Kristin, an engineer in the planning department. At the September 18th Operations Committee meeting, we discussed developing a local hazard mitigation plan, which is a document that identifies natural hazard vulnerabilities and outlines strategies to reduce risks from natural disasters such as wildfires, earthquakes, climate change, and flooding. It's the process through which hazards that threaten communities are identified, likely impacts of these hazards are determined, mitigation goals are set, and appropriate strategies to lessen impacts are determined, prioritized, and implemented. In April of 2020, the district secured a $150,000 grant to fund a local hazard mitigation plan. This project is largely funded by FEMA and will identify actions for risk reduction, increase the district's awareness of hazards, risks, and vulnerabilities, and make the district eligible for a range of hazard mitigation funding programs. Adoption of a local hazard mitigation plan is required for the district to be eligible to receive mitigation grant funding awarded through state and federal grant programs and to be eligible to receive post-disaster recovery funding. In August, district staff publicly advertised a request for proposals. Seven firms submitted proposals in September, and after reviewing the proposals, staff interviewed three most qualified firms and contacted their references. From this process, staff recommends that Tetra Tech be selected to prepare the plan for several reasons. Tetra Tech's project team has extensive experience conducting hazard mitigation plans in California and has demonstrated a thorough understanding of FEMA's requirements. They have an extremely experienced team and a project manager to guide the project. The project manager has over 30 years of experience working with FEMA. Additionally, they will conduct benefit cost analyses of mitigation actions, which will be critical to applying for future grant funding. Tetra Tech has developed a customized scope of services for preparing the district's FEMA-approved local hazard mitigation plan. The scope includes identifying natural hazard vulnerabilities and outlining strategies and mitigation actions to reduce the district's risk and improve resiliency. The scope also includes public outreach strategies and planning for monitoring and updating the plan over time. Additionally, the scope includes numerous workshops, public meetings, and assistance with CALOES and FEMA approval of the plan. The project is planned to start this month and will be completed by June of 2022. The plan itself will be completed by January of 2022, so a little over a year. But CALOES and FEMA approval could take until June of 2022. The total cost for preparation of the plan is estimated at $200,000. FEMA awarded the district a grant for up to $150,000 or 75% of the project cost. So, the district is responsible for 25% of the project within kind labor. This grant, this is a grant reimbursable project, so the district will need to pay for the contract costs of $150,000 as the project progresses and will be reimbursed by FEMA at the end of the project. The contract cost is $150,000, so the district's contribution will be $50,000 through staff and kind labor, and that makes up our 25% of the project cost. In summary, district staff requests that the Board of Directors approve Resolution Number 8612, authorizing the general manager to execute professional services agreement with Tetra Tech in the amount of $150,000. Have any questions?
What office of Tetra Tech is doing it?
Sorry, what was that?
What office? Which office? Where are they coming from?
Oh, I believe, the project manager is out of Colorado. But some of their staff is located in California. I think a couple in Sacramento, and then I think one in Southern California.
Okay, I mean, that's a little bit of a concern, I think, but you know, I, I, have we ever worked with, I, I mean, I know the company very well. Have we ever worked with them before?
I'm, I'm not aware of a contract that our department has done with them recently, Larry.
I'm not either, Mike. I don't remember them popping up. It, it's, I suppose it's a sign of the times that they're interested in a job that size for a company that size. I remember they lost this, this camera. They were towing a camera from Hawaii to California for the Navy, and it broke off of its tether. And it was enough that it almost bankrupted the company. That, that's how much they lost when they lost the camera. So, I, that, that's a long time ago, but I remember that about Tetra Tech very well. And they're a great company. I mean, they're, you know, a big EPA contractor, for one thing. But it is kind of interesting. They used to have an office in Walnut Creek, and I was kind of hoping it would be those folks, but it looks like that's not going to happen, so. Well, need a report on how they're doing, because I would suggest you ride them pretty hard. You know, I have a feeling when they're that scattered around, it's gonna be hard to get someone to pay attention to us, but, you know, let's see where it goes.
Larry Bragman, you got a question?
Oh, I have a comment. Tetra Tech is, is being sued by the Department of Justice for widespread fraud at Hunter's Point. So, their reputation precedes them. I don't know if we put this out to bid, and this is a relatively minor contract, but it's, it's a scandal what happened at Hunter's Point, and Tetra Tech is right in the middle of it. So, just an informational point. It's, it's probably unrelated to this type of work, but it's, it's a big case, and it's, 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 it's a big scandal.
All right, I think for us on this team, one of the things we're looking for is somebody who could kind of unlock the key to FEMA, because you have to do this kind of plan exactly the way they want it, and they've done, you know, they really demonstrated they know how to do this. They can give us something of value and also help open the door to FEMA. And the project manager just came across very experienced and knowledgeable, and so really, they have a solid team here.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, any public comment on this?
We do not.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. Let me get a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote?
Director Bragman?
Hi.
Director Kohler?
Hi.
Director Russell?
Hi.
President Gibson?
Hi.
Future agenda items?
So, as you can see, or as you have seen on the staff report, tomorrow morning, bright and early, 9:30 AM, we'll have our Communications Committee meeting. And then on Friday, also in the morning, we're gonna have our Operations Committee meeting. So, we are jam-packed for the rest of this week, everyone.
All right.
Then, then next week, we have nothing.
If we just stretch this meeting out, we could roll into.
Well, it's almost 9:30.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Twelve more hours, right?
9:30 somewhere, right?
I need a fitful night's sleep to be ready for tomorrow.
Well, you're gonna be there, right? Is this the one you gotta go to court?
Yeah.
I see your compadres got the right approach to our meetings.
Oh, yeah.
So, so this week, we're pretty busy, and then we'll have Thanksgiving off next week. And then from our meetings, and then, of course, we'll come back December 1st for our special meeting, and then we'll have the Watershed Committee meeting on December 10th.
Okay. Thank you all. With that, I'll adjourn the meeting and see you all tomorrow.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. To you.